Let the calls meeting to order, five oh one. And we'll start off by saying, everybody stand please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The items too late for the agenda. I actually do have one item that I'd like to bring up about the selection committee. Just kind of wanting to get status on where we are with the selection committee on the rules and responsibilities document. I'm not sure if anybody else on the board has questions about that. Or any responsibilities that the committee has. Do you have a status on that?
Yeah, I would like to have that as an expression if you can.
Well, we could do it now, or we could add it before we do the reports.
Actually, next meeting in December. Presentation of the process to be followed and those kind of things will be presented for approval by the board. Since we're not going to really start doing the actual discussion, questioning of people that might be interested in finding positions until January. So I guess it's
I mean, are we gonna do, so here's the thing, I just want to make sure that everybody that's on the board, that's not involved in the process understands what that process is, what their roles and responsibilities are for this committee, and then what the board's responsibility would be eventually. And that's what that little document would should outline. But so if we don't want to do that tonight, and we want to table that to the seventh and do it as a discussion item. I guess that's fine.
But my concern is we're stacking, I mean, we're trying to keep the seven pretty limited.
I know.
We have pretty lengthy budget discussions, that's my concern is that if we don't do it.
We're not ready to do it.
Understood.
So good on seven, and take whatever time necessary, answering questions and working and ask whatever they want. And we'll vote on whether it's a good way to go or not, so we have to work on seven. Inside, Professor.
Do we have that process document already?
It's being documented, it's been speaking, but it needs to be presented to you in such a way that you can take a look at it, it makes sense. If questions about the issues about what's going on.
Okay, so. I guess that's fine with me. How's the other members of the board, you guys okay with
I want to know what's going on. I'm interested to know the process, I'm interested to be in, like, since I'm not on the committee, I want that maybe. You know, I want to know what our involvement is, how the process will work, so yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my idea, I mean.
Okay, so whomever is, I guess Laura, could you add that to the seventh agenda? To go through that, the selection process.
Laura, I'll talk to you about this now, should we set up for the agenda?
The bottom line is that it feels like it's an important thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So is that a new item?
Okay, any, any correspondence presentations? Any correspondence? Okay, any presentations, introduction to new staff and staff promotions?
The introduction of new staff was taken off the agenda because we have an agenda for that. So she will be introduced in the future. Maybe not December, maybe two.
One year in version.
We'll get it in person. But we do have a presentation, Grant Dewey, the executive director of the West River. He's being appointed with the team.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for giving us all the time to present this evening. The general idea, as you probably know, when it's Grant Dewey with Westerns and Museum of Money and Industry, we're located really cool location, lots of going on around us. And we're really looking to build a cultural campus, we have 28 acres, we've been there 52 years. And so we'd like to bring in some partners, it really makes some sense. And so I just want to share some ideas with you, and in a sense invite you to consider being on our campus in some form. Currently, we do have a bookmobile there and Storytime on Mondays, we really having fun being there, having been there. So I'll just jump right in and share a little bit about our mission, part of what we're looking for, partners that have similar missions, and so we're all about education. Our vision is to help empower future generations, all generations better understand better the environments and mining and associated industries. You're welcome to jump in and ask questions anywhere along the way. But my thought was, I want to learn a little bit more about your needs and plans, I understand you've been doing some strategic planning. And I'm sure a little bit about our vision and such. And really, we're looking for better some of the best and highest uses for our space in the community. As a nonprofit, we're trying hard to find a way to be sustainable, and yet also not just collapse to pure monetization. We get lots of offers to have a gas station or other things, would much rather have something parkish and a combination, so I'll show you kind of what we're thinking. You probably know our neighborhood, right, so we're in Copper Ridge District or Polaris Point. And we're the area that's actually still in the county surrounded by the city. And you probably are very aware of some of the new neighbors across the street, you've seen the hotel has started, visitor center, etc., so we're very excited about that, just for orientation, we would be down in the lower part of this room. So we've been dreaming about different possibilities on our campus, and really want to do something special and unique for the community. Because it is a great location and something the north end of the county could probably use. So could this be a place for, I speak library location? The top of the screen is to the north, and so I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see a bit more. We're starting to do schematics of what it might look like to have some different potential partners on the campus. So if we start at the top of the screen, we currently have a beautiful little white house there, you may have seen that, Queen Anne B. Green style home. Very historic, late 1880s by Joseph and Sarah Reynolds. And was a successful ranch that almost grew all the way out to Fox Run Park. So for example, the open space to the north of us was part of the ranch, and so the retention plans and sets that are happening there were part of the ranch, and that's part of our business. Continuing down towards the center of the diagram, we're proposing this location maybe for the library to have a beautiful space. If you can see some faint arrows, you'll see those are view locations, you can even see all the way to the mountains and section. Also, in the center is an area where we currently have our historic barns and space for events. And then as we move farther down, we see where our museum is, and then a lot of parking space and section. But this upper part was really, we're talking to the parks department about collaborating and partnering with them as well. And potentially using Topps money and other sources. We'd love to have a trailhead parking, we'd love to expand what we can do about restored building, we spent the past five years renovating it, so it's in beautiful shape. Invite you to come out and see that. As far as other ways and other potential partners, we've also been in touch down here at the bottom with Bass Pro. As you may know, on a national scale, they do lots of hotels and cabins and such. So we thought this could be a potential great location for some beautiful cabin rentals. So we've been working with N E S here in town, as you probably know them very well, and starting to do some schematics. So this is what it would look like from their overhead view of the campus. And this is your vision from the top of the campus, looking towards the west to the mountains, obviously. And this was actually the space that they were thinking of might be a great location for the library. And just to give you a little scale, what they've penciled in there is roughly 5,000 square feet per level. It could be two or three potential levels, really take advantage of the photography and the views and the location. Once again, more of an aerial angle looking down on that upper part of the campus.
Let me ask one question really quick, so that building, would that be shared space without anything, would that be purely set aside for library?
The current concept would be kind of a welcome center for the campus roof for library. There, people would know kind of overhead. Unless they stop immediately at the trailhead or perhaps. Yes. But we are open to some potential ideas as well. So we're looking to find partners who have similar visions and goals. To build a community cultural campus. And I think that would be a great match with you all. We can certainly talk more details, but in general, that's kind of what we're aiming for. So we're saying, you know, do you want to join us in the neighborhood, you want to be part of the area of what's happening? Like this, my understanding is that, and I've been enjoying and see a lot, because I live right by here, and I grew up in monuments, so I know the space. Understand there's not a lot in between, it'd be great to have something there. To service the customers, because it's certainly a growing area. So, pause there, ask the questions.
What are there any of the potential partners signed up or signed on, or are we working?
So, City Parks is very, very interested, yeah. And Bass Pro is interested, part of the challenge with Bass Pro is they have a pretty long national list of projects, so it's another priority to do that. We've also talked in the past about the children's museum. There's just two groups in town who are interested in that, we spoke with both of them. I think it'd be a great combination as well.
My kids have played in the museum.
Okay, super. So, but we are looking for other potential partners, we've locked, we've talked to a lot of community leaders, not necessarily who would be potential partners, but just who can contribute and be stakeholders. So timeframe, so we are growing financially, so we're becoming quite sustainable. And so we are looking, this would be great to happen in the next few years, we can't wait 10, because we're really trying to make a design for the next 50 years of our existence, not just the front.
What would the financial side look like? Are we looking for an initial assistance in building that campus, or like, would it just be like a rent that we can pay as far as our portion?
So we are very flexible in how we can approach that type of conversation. In general, we are land rich in a sense, right, so we'd be most likely looking to exchange some of that for the developments or potential future moves, that sort of thing. We're also just to be open, we are infrastructure cores, we're still operating on kind of a ranch style region. So we're on well and set. Need to really develop some things to do. We'd be very open to dialogue and club out network, and what can we do, pro, maybe grant applications.
So you said, I was getting sorry, I moved in real quick. You said that you're part of the county and not part of the city, correct? Have you heard any plans of bringing you into the city? Because that's probably where your sewage and water.
Correct, we could access a Denella, just in the north of us, we've actually stepped in for that. When we met with the mayor almost two years ago, he was very excited about the idea, and he was very aware that we're on plates, we're on that list of highly motivated to be included. And so we think that'd be a positive dialogue, something that would be great for the city. This would be a matter of negotiating, so. But we think that's kind of a natural thing that made me. So may I ask a question, just from my observation, I guess most of the time the library create space versus building things, etc. So this type of approach might be new, to actually develop your own new space.
It just really depends, I think that we've got several branches that we actually own. Because either the land was donated, or we've paid a some sort of amount for the land that we own, the building that we built, and things like that, so there are, it's a combination. There are some branches, obviously, that we pay rent on because it's in a shopping complex or something. And we don't actually own the building, so it's both.
As far as I know, we would be open to someone else owning the building and potentially some of the land. As long as it's a good collaboration, long term mission for us. We don't mind becoming even a smaller part of what's there, we really want to be multiple experiences for the public. And we know that mining is crucial, but not necessarily climate based, so we're willing to recommend that. But we do want to preserve ourselves for our own mission for our distribution. That's kind of what I have, unless you want to go into more potential details about our status, kind of pre-development type information.
Mistaken, I think, did we have this presentation at one point a few years ago? Yeah, when John was here, I thought we did have. No, it wasn't a U R A, it was, it was a separate partnership that, that they had come to John with, and John was asking if this is something that the board would be interested in moving forward. So I think it's kind of similar here, but the problem that we have right now is, is that we're getting to the point where we're pinching pennies. And just to support what we currently have. And so the question that was asked about the timeframe, I thought was very relevant, because that gives us an idea if this is something that we are interested in doing. Which, if we had all the money in the world, yeah, I would love to do this. I wanted to do this the first time we did it, but we were having the same issues with, with the funding. I don't know if it's something that we would do quickly. And again, this is my opinion based on a previous discussion with the budget and such. It may not be done within a year or two, maybe even three, I mean, we would probably be looking at year four or five, if we're still interested in doing this. I think it's something that I think we would be interested in doing, it's just a matter of trying to figure out funding and what it is that the library would be responsible for doing.
Especially, I mean, my biggest concern is not even so much the cost to give up money, it's the ongoing costs.
Yeah, the expense.
That's a lot of stuff. About spur footage that we have to have there.
But we had that same problem with the monument library that was being proposed. We just didn't have the expense dollars on a regular basis, capital, I mean, you could set up a capital campaign to do something.
Oh, right.
Yeah, but that, that's easy, but yeah, it's just the ongoing expenses that would have to be budgeted, and that, that's kind of where we're getting into the whole funding part of the problem that we have.
So, from my understanding, and so strategic thinking around facilities. I mentioned those square footages, just to give an idea about the, not that they know what you need, it's kind of what we were asked. I don't know if we want five.
I think one of the things staff that maybe forgot about is the fact that we did the U R A for visitor center across the way. We negotiated that they would provide a space for our library. So we haven't really pushed that down really very yet, but we have the same kind of problem, you know, we have a problem with the budget and being able to grow all those kinds of things. Not that we don't need one, but we need more facilities, but we just don't have the
I understand, I assume we're all happy that seven, eight months, maybe you guys can get on the mountain.
So I, I mean, I appreciate you doing this, I do. I think this was a great idea when we first, or at least some of us first went through it, when John was on C E O and now with the new members in here, and I mean, I think this is a great idea. I just don't know when we would be able to build that partnership yet, at this point.
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, I love it, I loved it when we came to internal affairs, I, I think it's a great project. I don't think we could commit even anytime soon, even if we said, yeah, we'll do this, or be out here, I just don't think we're at that point yet, so if you needed M O U or commitment, we're not there. But it's a great project to have.
Don't forget about us.
No, definitely not, we'd much rather wait and do something like, let this spread a community. And so I think we can do that to some extent. I'm hoping that maybe at some point we can talk about phasing smaller steps, that's why we're engaged in trying to do some programs on sites and that sort of thing. And maybe there's a smaller rental that can happen in the meantime, and we talk about your facilities, we need to consider how much you pay as you step into it.
Is the mobile library visit there today? Okay. Okay.
We're getting good treatment.
Yeah, it's, yeah, because there's nothing up there, there isn't a branch up there, this is their closest branch, if I'm not mistaken.
Can we dialogue about potentially doing a locker system, I think you're testing. We're looking to be creative and open. Let's, thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation.
Okay.
Is, is Mia, or is she not going to be here?
Mia is going to be. Now, okay.
We have any public comments tonight? Hey, business items, moving to consent items. I have a new business, we'll take care of that, but right now we've got minutes for the October 19th, 22, 2022 meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2022 meeting as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for October 19th, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Okay, it's approved. And unfinished business, strategic plan.
Well, I'll, I'll start from the channel, I'll pop in. I did see a couple of things that I think we need to change the language on access, where it said ensure, it said we wanted that change. And I thought maybe even safeguard or protect the right of all library patrons could be a word that we could use. And then under staff, I think it was suggested that we remove continue to do whatever. So I think we should just start with the, the word offer salary and benefits that are hard with local state, but instead of continue to offer. And those are the only ones that I have any questions, but before, I, this is the document that's going to be on the website that everybody will see and what we will work from. The other document is that with all the tactics, that belongs in the departments and, and they will take care of that, so.
I like the comments there, overall I thought the document is good. So.
Either, either way, I just looked up some notes and I thought those would be a good change. Anyone else have any comment? Is it going to go up to a vote?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve that she would claim as invented, with, will protect, protect and continue to.
That was a motion I seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, it's been approved. All right.
A lot of work.
Yeah, moving along with new business, U R A city gate.
Okay, thank you, board. I want to make, looks like we've got, yeah, I've been working since. Um, John Walker, executive editor of the Carls Springs for Bruno and Old Forty, thank you so much for having me today, as well as members of our project team and our consultants online. Sarah Demeyer is the consultant with E P S, they're essentially the firm that did all the studies that you've already seen, it was in the back of last month. We also have Laura Newton here, who is representing by her team. And I wanted to, we're not going to go through the whole presentation again, because I know we already did on that. Um, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of high level points with it, and we can, I figured we'll spend enough for discussion, and then kind of talk about any questions the board has before we have to go. Um, obviously, this project, 182 units, 37,000 square feet retail. It's southwest, southwest of Sawatch and Simron area, just behind Whitehurst Stadium. The mayor's office, kind of commissioners, city council, school districts, and the library district, really as far back as when Paul Miller was director, when we were going through the C 4 C process and picking these projects and really being community champions for it, all have a role in the site where it is, it isn't an existing U R A. But we were never able to get development fully plugged around it, so really this is that anger that we need to really make sure it's fully good. These units also will have the micro and studio aspects to them as well, which is something that our market does not have. And so that'll be an exciting new addition to downtown. As far as we're around the process, the school district, we'd be in school district 11, the downtown development authorities, the county have all pledged to this project. City's planning commission just recently voted that it's in 100% compliance with the city's conference plan, which is an important step with the state statutes. The site was written with white, you saw the conditions of these in your packet that we had, it was called out in particular faulty sidewalks, pedestrian access, high primaries, heavy amounts of trash, and we poorly maintain landscape and vegetation, and deteriorated buildings, among many other factors. The library is currently collecting very little on that, that's actually detailed out there, impacted for. And by supporting the project, we'll grow that to 153 K per year, something that doesn't exist today. And additionally, as with all of our project areas, we will grow new tax development around this development. The more residential units that we're building in our downtown core, more retail, more restaurants and buildings can be created to increase the property tax base, but really all of the taxing, it's not just the libraries that ever go. And obviously, this often occurs while the project is being developed much earlier than the 25 year timeline. On the project, also, we're hoping, is really a future domino to the improvements around the Drake Park plant site. This area is not an easy area to go into, it's got a lot of environmental challenges. And so really, we see this as a catalytic project to start more conversations about what that looks like, community is doing some visions, and some of you might be part of that around what that area could look like moving in the future. And this is a really important dominant to help give us there, it's something that really is just showing the level of investment going in this community. The public improvements, we always talk about public improvements for all of our projects, they're going to be vast on this one, public guard, walkways, sidewalks, public parking, increase safety, get vehicles and pedestrians, not only closer to the stadiums, but also not parking in the mostly neighborhood, which has been a real concern on the other side as well. And, you know, I know we've, we've talked about, you know, concerns with, with funding or, or how this might overwhelm, you know, the library district, and really what we're hoping is by creating this investment, by creating this catalyst, this catalytic investment, not only to grow that ultimate pot, and that for you in 25 years, we all would exist there today, but also we're going to have more development going on in this area, it's not even going to be within U R A. You know, really, commercial chases residential development, we do expect new development to come into the area that will absolutely be a feeder to all the taxing of these that will be within an existing or a new. So with that, I mean, we would like to bring up Laura Newman, just to be able to say anything, any words that she wants to you all, and then we're obviously here, I'm happy to answer any. And then we're obviously here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you all for your consideration this evening. Laura Gaiman, I service this project group on behalf of Wyler Department of Health. Having the K D for eighteen years and Wyler is located in Brooklyn, Washington. So I stand here before you. I'm representing the writer and his executive team. And you did a fabulous job, Joy. I don't, I don't.
I tried to sell it quick.
I don't know what I would reiterate other than potentially the catalytic. Eyes that are upon us as we do our development. Parking is a given. Everyone is so appreciative of the investments. Almost forty million dollars in public parking. That we're doing over and above what the residential maybe requires. And then our public plazas, a lot of people have their eyes on that. But most recently. A lot of people are looking at what we're doing with infrastructure because we are the closest land development to the existing Drake site. And that Drake conversation is heating up rather significantly. There's approximately thirty-five usable acres. The substation will remain. So that's carved out of the fifteen existing acres. And so everything we're doing from an infrastructure, mobility. All of the utility work matters to a lot more than just ourselves. And so we need to make a significant investment to get it right for others to be in the front of that area. And so we're just making a lot of decisions. They'll hopefully come before you. And I think Joy did a great job and I'll just pause and open that session.
And Sarah, do you have anything to add real quick too? I forgot to call on you. Do you have anything you want to add to what I said?
I think you both covered it beautifully. I would just highlight all aspects that you guys talked about. And if there's any additional questions, I'm happy to answer any of them.
So do you have? Always.
I know you.
So the table from the, the last meeting that we had, it was based on three eight five five is the bill. So for next year, we're only going to be going up to what three point four something. Three five point seven? Okay. And then. So these dollar figures are based on our current mill, correct?
Correct.
But our, our deferment will be based on that existing mill for that year, correct?
Correct.
Right, yeah. I think I asked that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's a good question.
So what happens if? The library does not participate. Obviously, the project doesn't die because we're not a huge.
Sure. So, um. That is kind of a question. And it's a bigger question than just the project.
I understand.
Right? I think that the, there is so much effort. And it is, and I say this many times, you obviously don't see other projects that don't make it past me to you, right? These are all different. But really each of these projects stands, stand on their own in different ways, shapes, forms. This particular project being an anchor to the city for champions, being something the community has a long term vision of. I think it'd be detrimental to the library to not support it, really from a community vision standpoint and from a collaborative standpoint. I think one thing in, in, tell me that I've talked about this some, and I know I've talked with, with somebody individually about this as well. But there's a great opportunity right now. You've got a new mayor coming into office. I don't know who that is yet, but it's still a wonderful opportunity. You've got a new opportunity with new city council members coming into office. You've got county seats that are pretty much set for this for the next two years before those change out. And so now you're, in my opinion. As, as you support these projects, you're really forcing a place at the table. You know, you're saying we're community players, we're, we're, we're building these projects. I believe that there's ripple benefits. I actually think the library will benefit more in dollars than just the pledge to the project, just with its built around it. But that's irrelevant. You should be seen as a community player for what you've done, not only for the city and the county, but what you're doing for these projects and how they're moving forward. They can't, you know, they can't go on. I mean, if the library doesn't support, maybe the school doesn't support, and maybe the county doesn't support it. It's ripple. And it could be, it could be a dangerous thing. It's a dangerous question. Our responsibility is to only bring you projects that need it, right? Our responsibilities to actually have a butt for their test and actually get in front of you and say, we have to. There could be projects in the future that don't come to you. You know, that might not. Seriously, you know, there, there could be a scenario where that occurs. Um, but we don't bring them to you unless, unless we feel like it needs it. So I would say from an optic standpoint. And just from a, from a collaborative standpoint, I think it would be a huge miss to not, because I do think you're going to get added revenue by doing this. And I truly. That's a very long answer to your question.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else? So. My understanding, maybe this is an incorrect understanding, is that there's already been development beginning on this property?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding, and again, might be a misunderstanding, was that. That would be a disqualifier for a U R A in the sense that the U R As are only available, like this is my understanding. So my understanding is that. Projects that qualify for U R A had to be. Like, they would not exist without U R A support moving on. And so if they're already building and going forward with this before we even pledged to support this, I'm a little confused as to why we're needed. And this and what the validity of this conversation is.
Great, great question. Great point. I'll answer it. And if Laura wants to jump on this as well, she certainly can. So first and foremost. This development project with COVID, with timing, with supplies, supply chain issues, the price of concrete, the price of all of it. They had to at least start working on phase one with the hope that they could get this stuff done through the process. So it was essentially a pledge to say we're going to, we're going to build this. If, if for some, if this doesn't go through, then really what we're going to have is one building without the public improvements, without the parking. Without any of the other aspects that we have around it, they will not be able to finish up the other phases. Frankly, I don't think they would have started unless they were able to fill out, you know, unless they were able to get the U R A pledge. And get everything going, but it's a leap of faith. They believe in the community. The, the mayor's office has been behind them, county's been behind them, a lot of these other entities have been behind them. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a faith of just trying to get it scheduled because frankly. With the supplies and with even employment labor, it was a very difficult stretch to be able to get this done during this time. Because if they would have halted it, it would have actually cost them a lot. And we would have been having a bigger gap and maybe not even been able to bring the project that we're presenting to you today. Do you want to add on to that?
No, that was, that was the right answer. It was running in parallel. But phase two and phase three are contingent on some U R A decisions we made. So nothing's happened with phase two or phase three, to be quite honest, nor has anything happened with the public plazas along the rain over two blocks. Then about right up to the railroad tracks, which will go right up to the Drake site. So all of those are on hold pending these decisions. But phase one is underway.
It becomes a much different project. The other benefit to that is. It plays, it plays to your benefit as well. And actually your base will be calculated a little bit higher. Because those improvements get assessed. And so when, when, when city council ultimately makes this a U R A area. That piece, that extra assessment value goes into the base. And then of course, you as well as all the other taxing entities, don't lose that base that gets locked in. So those improvements will actually benefit too.
So should phase one be removed from the U R A success outside of the deed of the U R A that's being requested?
It's in, it's in totality. So we can't get any of the other public improvements built. That service not only all those units, but the public in general without the U R A designation. Otherwise it just becomes a private building with none of the art, none of the plaza, none of the public improvements. The public parking, all the aspects that make this project a legacy and special will not occur.
And if, and if we did, and Sarah would be the one to answer this. Financially, the public improvements required for those two plazas and for phase two and three exceed what we're asking and coming forward from a financial standpoint. And so Sarah, I don't know if you have any comments about that, but the public improvements we're doing, the dollars. Are exceed what's going to be committed to us. So we could subtract.
Otherwise, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have it be. We wouldn't have been here right in front of the U S. So. I mean, this is probably the wrong analogy, but it feels a little like. We're being pressured into this since you've already started and now you're coming asking for permit, you know, not, not permission, but asking for the, the allocation and us to do this, saying. We're already doing this. So you guys probably just go ahead and prove it. And it feels a little.
It's different though. It's, it's not that they're, they're not doing it that we're presenting to you.
No, 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 I, I, I understand that. But there's already movement and motion on that.
Yeah.
In part of what is being presented to us because that it, as, sorry. What I mentioned was, you know, this is phase one. You mentioned this is phase one. So, so what is being developed is part of what's being presented to us. Not in totality, but at least in parts.
What, what is, what is in phase one? That question you're asking, that's what you're asking.
Well, you were, no, no, no. I was just saying that. What you're asking, some of the work is already being done on phase one.
Yes.
And so that's what I'm saying is, is yes, what we're being presented with the full phase three won't happen unless the U R A gets approved here.
Yes, yes.
But what I'm saying is part of what is in our packet is already under construction, under development.
Yeah, you're from, from, from a supposed basic level. So the residential component, yeah, all the public places that we go around that have not.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and this is just me. I know. We talked a little bit about this at the last board meeting, about how this is going to affect the community around that. And I know there was some, some comments saying, yeah, but we don't know that will happen. But it's also like, we don't know that the sun's going to rise tomorrow, but like, there's a good like ninety-nine point nine percent chance that. Just because we know how we can handle this work, we know how all of this plays, that that's going to happen. So saying that we're not sure that it's going to happen. Feels a little disingenuous and kind of mitigate, minimizes that concern around. The, the community around there. So. I believe so. I'm talking on most of it.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so Mill Street Neighborhood Plan. Um, this was done years prior. This area does not exist within the boundaries of the Mill Street Plan.
Right.
At all. So saying that this area is going to increase it is the same as saying that something. Over by Palmer High School would increase the rent in this area or something in South. Whatever, whatever. It's, it's specifically called out as not being in this area. I would also argue too, there's a couple of areas within the plan, upgrading infrastructure. Collaborative to improve safety, supporting cleanup efforts. All of these aspects this development team is actually doing in Mill Street. I'll also highlight this development team has invested directly in the Mill Street Neighborhood with Shelley Jensen's project. Which is all geared towards young adults, homeless, young adults, giving them transitional housing. Um, so they have supported that. They've also gone above and beyond the Mill Street Neighborhood. To invite them to meetings, to have collaborative discussions with them, to figure out what their, their overall concerns are. You know, the, I, I, I would argue, and I've been, I've been in economic development before being with Urban Authority Forty, and then even in my tenure with Urban Authority Forty. This development team has done more with that neighborhood and frankly, they didn't have to. The property zone for what it is, it's not within the neighborhood plan. They're absolutely able to build it. They don't have to do the public improvements. They don't have to build the other phases. We need the U R A dollars somewhere to do that. But it's absolutely creating a safer environment. It's absolutely building out infrastructure, creating a gateway into that community. And something that they will benefit from. Now, we can't control. Private owners and inventors in those houses, et cetera. We can't get into that discussion because frankly. I don't know what's going to happen. I can make an argument that sometimes it's better to rid because then you can leave and you want to be a little bit more nimble. You don't have to pay proper taxes. You maybe don't have to do that. Keep on your home. Some people prefer that lifestyle. You know, I've always been the type where I've, I've wanted to own my home, but I've got a lot of friends that never want to own a home because they want to be able to go wherever they want to go. So there is absolutely benefits in the Mill Street Neighborhood with this, but this is not falling into the plan or the purview of that agreement.
And if I could just add to the Mill Street Neighborhood, I do spend quite a bit of time with, it is a dichotomy there. Over sixty percent of them rent, and so they have a different perception of what increased land will do to them and their rental. Those who happen to own there are very supportive of what we're doing. So it, it's tough. It, it's really tough. What the renters have asked is if, if there is a way we could help control the rent from their private landlords. Okay, that's really the request. And of course. That's not something we can do, but what we can do is invest into their neighborhood and around their neighborhood. And build retail and things and public classes that may matter to them, that they can enjoy. But that's sticking point of their individual rent. It's really, it's a really tough matter.
Frankly, the more you do to help support them in that, the higher the property taxes are going to go, the more the problems it's asked for me. And that's the problem is to support them or. And.
Yeah, you try to make the area as safe as possible and put in infrastructure and lace in this groundwork to kind of help. And obviously, the, these are public spaces. So, you know, we'll be able to enjoy that just like anybody else. But, but that is, you know, we can't control what an individual owner does, you know, on their house if there's a tenant renting. Just like we can't control if someone owns the house, they're going to sell it. Maybe they make a lot of money or maybe they, you know, turn it over to the kids. It's, it's tough to say. It's on a case by case basis.
And in addition to Shelley's tiny home project, we are investing money into the Archapent Company facility. The, the, where the Salvation Army is and helping create that to be a family. I don't know if everyone knows that all of the family oriented shelters will be closed by the end of this year. So we invested money along with Casa, I Love You and the city to make thirty individual like apartments. That's a, that's a really broad term. Thirty individual living spaces for families to be there and have all of that relocated to the Springs Rescue Mission. That is really helpful to that area. We also installed a bus stop so that complimentary bus called the Zeb that comes right into Mill Street. You can get on and you can ride it all the way up to Ropes and Arena and get off at any of the different retail establishments. So. We're doing what we think we can with the situation. But the number one request they have is the one that we can't resolve for them. Is the rent of their individual homes, their own by others other than ourselves. So.
This can't be controlled.
I know that probably didn't answer your question.
But that, that neighborhood could be very well displaced. So as we look at what I keep hearing, affordable housing. Um, I mean, just like they displaced some of those folks that live down in South Nevada. Through the improvements that have gone on down there.
Actually. Correction on that. We did not, like, so we actually provided relocation assistance for all those people. So nobody was.
Okay.
You know, forcefully displaced. The, the, the only, I will say this, the only people that were displaced, there was a lot of homeless that were camping in abandoned homes. Properties and homes that were falling into the creek. You know, I mean, I guess you could say we displaced that, but, but we did provide relocation assistance for.
So, but that, how would that help the Mill Street community? Because I wonder how many of those folks there are on fixed incomes.
Sure.
And could they, I mean, ten dollars could make a difference whether they eat or pay their rent. And I think those are the things that gnaw at some of us.
A hundred percent. And if, if we were. If we were building a, like you were a project in that neighborhood, like within their plan area. Then it becomes a much different conversation, right?
Oh, I agree, yeah.
And it would also depend on are there homes, you know, we're not in the business of knocking down existing homes or, or, or getting rid of, you know, get rings. We're trying to make communities better. So maybe there would be a commercial component or something in there. I know there's, there's a coffee shop I love up there. I can't remember. So if we were to do something in that space, you know, for instance, then we would be having these conversations with them. It would say, okay, how do we. You know, how do we make sure that we try to comply within this plan as much as possible and invite you to the table to have input in these conversations? It's a totally different conversation for building in that area. But this particular site, really, we've always looked at, even since City for Champions was in its infancy stages, we always thought. Boy, you know, if we could get that project down there with residential down there and that was specifically not in this plan. Because that was something that we had talked about well, well in the past. But it would be a different story if we were building right in the neighborhood, for sure.
That's where I struggle. So before this meeting, we just had a budget meeting. Where, you know, we're really.
Um, where, you know, we're really confronting some hard choices.
Sure.
That we're going to have to make, um, in funding our library services. Yeah, um, but I, I do understand, you know, I understand the whole tax increment thing. We still get what we would have gotten anyway. I get all that.
Yep.
From an optics standpoint, though. It's, it's difficult to me to, uh, I mean, I think if, if we went out and asked our patrons. Well, hey, would you like some of your library tax dollars to go to build luxury housing downtown? Pretty sure what the answer would be. Um, so it's hard to.
But it wouldn't be their dollars, right? I mean, but.
I know, but they don't get that. And because then we'll, what if we went, the next time we go to ask them for their dollars?
Sure.
It, it's just tough. It's a tough sell. I understand having a place at the table. I understand making city council and the mayor happy. I'm trying not to roll my eyes when you say that.
I'm sorry. I mean, it's, but, but it's a fact, right? I mean, it's politics and it's, it's, I, I hear you though.
Yeah.
I'm with you. I, I, I'm with you.
Yeah, no, I, I know. So, so that's where I struggle.
Sure.
And I, I know you don't have the answer for that, but I, I just.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it's, I think, you know, I will say, I don't think any U R A, supporting any U R A is gonna, gonna. You know, from a, from a budget, the size of the budget that you have and for, for what the library does, new U R A is gonna make a little break that.
I, I get that.
Um, I think you have much more to gain strategically, you know, with supporting it. But I also say, I think your first metric. Me personally, if I put on the private citizen hat, got it through. That's first and foremost what the library needs to work on, working with local elected leaders to get that done. And then work on that middle of the increase next after that. But that's, to me, that's what's going to help with your budget, more so than, than not supporting any U R A.
Understood.
Comment, questions?
I'm going to ask one more, this is more logistical. So you said, any improvements done right now would go to the base.
Yeah.
Property tax. How does that work since that's part within the U R A boundaries? How, how, how does that base get improved?
Well, we're not a U R A boundary yet, right? So, so ultimately, when we, when we're going to council and we create this, then it'll become an official U R A should they wish to do so. So that's all in their core. But should they wish to do for, it'll be assessed at its current value, whatever that current value is, is the base. So county, city, library, school. That water conservancy district hall. Will get that amount, that base amount in the village that they're selling, you know, off of that amount. And then even the net new development not forward is what goes through. Well.
Okay, um, for the vote. Well, okay, that'd be nice to start off. Your motion.
Throw it up there. I moved at the Pikes Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the U R A city day two point oh one.
Your second. Your second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So let's take an individual vote. Laura, you want to vote? Aaron, yes or no?
It's a hard one, but based on our conversation earlier, wasn't it? Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
No.
Aaron? Yes. So you find out what, uh, Mina will do for this, okay?
She was at the earlier meeting, but she was not going to just take this one.
Okay. Okay.
So how do we do that? How does that work? Is that just?
Count the votes and see, uh. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, next is, uh, you are a Gold Hill Mesa.
Thank you, Laura. I'm going to say. Okay, Gold Hill Commercial, um. Again, not going to go through the presentation on this one, just to save the sake of time. Uh, this project is mixed use with residential and retail components and is an existing U R A. With the current clock expiration of twenty four. So, uh, was math wizard, it's twenty fifteen is when this was formed. Uh, so not too, too long ago. And if the project isn't supported, it essentially sits for another eighteen years, right? Because it's an existing U R A. So there's no development that occurs on it. Uh, the current base on this area is again low, there's no structure. So with full support of this project will grow that to a hundred and two thousand dollars per year. Uh, because of the U R A tool, the existing Gold Hill Mesa U R A, uh, which is all residential. That U R A is going to throw off about one point eight to two million dollars in property taxes once the area expires, and that'll be in May of twenty twenty nine. Uh, which is only seven more years away. We do expect about a one to two year gap for the increment to start being generated on this new commercial component. And so actually, it's kind of interesting with the support that this project, the wall over from all the residential increment will go to all the taxing entities. Really close to the same time. So it'll be a nice benefit, uh, to all the taxing entities. Uh, our consulting EPS, who has done all, uh, who's done work like this throughout the state, has openly said at multiple meetings. Uh, that the Gold Hill Mesa site is not only one of the heaviest lighted sites that they've ever seen, but it's beyond the need of full pledges to make the project viable. Uh, in, in addition to EPS's words, this is really a post child site for how to do proper environmental cleanup and mitigation. While creating a meaningful asset for the community. In addition to the site cleanup, the work being done with Fountain Creek cannot be understated as a critical public improvement for the region. Uh, the added performance base and historic preservation of the old smoke stack is a huge win for the community as well. Um, we do expect that as the added residence and commercial development comes in. That we're going to create ripple effect development on this one too. We're really looking at less of twenty first street. I think it's going to be an area that's going to be ripe for more development. Outside of the U R A as well as to the south. Um, and let's see here. I'd love, you, you, actually, the, the library district is the first voter on this one. There's, there's the last, the lighter. With all the sports, you have a chance to be the first in line on this project. We'll be at the school district at the end of the month. Um, we did go to, uh, city council budget committee and expect this to be a planning commission. Uh, probably end up in luck as well, but that's around as far as the timelines of the project go. Happy to answer any questions we do have. I, I want to call them out too. We do have members of the development team actually here in the audience, Stephanie Edwards. Um, I don't think this right one online, guys, I don't think he is. Brian's on line, but Sabo Small and John Wilson are here as well. Oh, Kevin. Yeah, Kevin's on line. So I didn't, didn't see you there, Kevin, if you're there. Um, so happy to answer any questions about this project, kind of where it's, where it's at in the stated things, but. Hopefully we'll have your support because again, without the U R A existing on that residential opponent, all those funds wouldn't be rolling in the library within the next seven years. So hopefully you'll see the same on the commercial list.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the apartments, are those going to be rentals?
Want to take that?
Yeah.
And so what is your rental base on there?
So there, there's a number of companies and developers, uh, looking at parking projects. Um, I would say we're. Some of you need to, we're really trying to keep our costs as effective as possible. And so we're creating a stick free product. And so there's no structured parking or a cast and place garage. And so it's a mean service park. And so you're able to keep your costs down that way. We're also going to have some. Uh, single family homes or, or townhomes, uh, as well. And so part of the idea is you can create a, a diverse rental lease. Uh, but also built to economize on some of your, uh, permits, right? So you're able to have more units, but still have, you know, same, you know, uh, you know, club room or, or leasing area. Or a leasing team, all of that, you're able to economize and all that value. Ultimately, our goal is to roll that into the renter. And create a product that is as affordable as possible. Um, obviously that's a function of cost and, you know, we haven't really gotten to that point yet. But through our design, we're really creating cost effective products.
Yeah, so we're, we're working to accomplish that. Questions, um, I check, uh, running on, and that's just the very. Approach and then. Find and then you can't deliver the achievement of the project. So we. Trying to scale it. Structures.
Yeah, the, the alternative was looking at a much more dense product, but that would also increase, you know, your structure parking. And, yeah, that's thirty five to forty thousand dollars a parking spot. You have four units and you have a couple of stalls of these. Now, that's all costs that need to be justified on your rents. Our goal is not to have to push that onto the renter and to create a product that is, you know, we're not trying to make the market, we're just trying to make the market. Uh, and really our goal, but the lower our rents are, the less risk there is for us as a developer. Uh, and, and there's a great.
I had a question. You said Trucker's Development opportunity to the south. I thought there was, it was pretty well.
I'm sorry, I meant east.
Okay.
East of the area. Sorry, I was like. Sorry, really to the east. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Good catch.
And I, I would just add, just generally speaking, our goal is to create a product that's much, that's more affordable than what you see in the downtown community. We want to be able to offer a community that you have access to downtown, get to be downtown, but at a, at a price point that, you know, is a little. We recognize that.
And I, and I do expect, you know, I mean, I'll say it again, that you will actually see more revenue. On that other U R A expiring, then you'll actually be pledging to this.
Make a motion.
The Pikes Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the U R A Gold Hill Mesa commercial as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Don't favor, I'll ask to say a vote again. Aaron?
Yes, to this one.
Okay.
Yes.
Say yes. Say yes.
To decent.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, I. Appreciate it, Laura. Thank you very much.
You have a question.
Yeah.
Previous vote, not, not for you, but previous vote. Yeah. Are we going to be able to get a hold of Mia? So we're both, I, I was going to ask about that. I thought her Roberts rules of it's tied.
Yes.
If it's a tie, it's dead because it's a voting of members who are present at the time of the meeting. And so that, that's my understanding is that that vote was not passed based off of having a, a tie. So she's not here. That is my understanding.
So it doesn't.
So I just wanted to clarify.
That's a good, that's a good point.
I, I, I needed to look that up because it just didn't sound right that we're asking somebody that's not present to vote.
Right, that was, I was kind of, I was going to circle back from that.
We may bring it up in next meeting.
Yeah. So here's, here's the, yeah, I think I was going to go where you're going to. There is a possibility we could revote, but at a lower percentage.
Oh.
The mediation.
Not, not now, but I mean, yeah.
We could go on another point.
Yeah, if we, if we decide that we want to vote again on the December.
Oh, gosh.
In January even, um, we could do that. Bring it up again, but at this point, based on Roberts rules of order, it failed to pass.
Correct. So, but the point is mediation is.
It's, I think, I'm a little, I'm a little confused.
So, so per Roberts rules, the vote is of the members present, not of the entire, uh, membership of the body. And so because we're three, three, it does not pass, has to be fifty one percent to pass. And so because we are tied at a fifty fifty, the motion does not pass. Therefore, it fails since we only have six members here. If you knew this year, it's what the title decision's not present.
So there's nothing in your guys' bylaws that talk about a member's not present? Not that I, no. Cause he, here's the, here's the concern we have. This is supposed to go in first city council, but we can't. We can't put it to the press until we have your support. If we don't have your support, then we got to touch on the phone table, going to do the state statute, which is applying the, essentially mediation, you know, on top of it. Um, but I, I, I try not to drag it out. So if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. That's why we don't, we don't have. Okay, but thank you.
Weekend.
Okay, so. The first policy that's up is the circulation policy, and this is presented a little bit differently than how you've seen it. Uh, the first sheet that's on page seventy five, this is the cleaned up version. So if you approve the changes, this is how it would read. Because there's a significant amount of thread line in what we, we took. So, you know, we, we heard you at the, uh, strategic planning meeting about duplication of language and things like that. So. Uh, we took that to heart in this and Jenny is here. Jenny, if I can, I might be able to answer your questions, but Jenny Pearson is here and she's the expert with this one. So if you had any questions. Would be happy to ask.
I don't have any questions, but I have some, I guess it would be grammatical kind of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, on the second paragraph, everywhere else throughout the document, you say P, Pikes Peak Library District, and this one you say the library supports.
Okay.
And then on, um, and this was in the procedures, and I don't know if I was reading the right one or not, but there's a place for you, um.
Hold on, can I back up just a minute? So where she says the library supports. You just say P P L D in parentheses after the first paragraph and then just.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, then that'll make a difference because that was my other concern. Somewhere else you have P P L D, but everywhere else it's spelled out. So you either got to go one way or another. That was my only. And I'm not even an English teacher.
It almost is like you taught English.
I just know that my mind thinks very logical like that, and it was like, it's not parallel. It's driving me nuts.
So I, I actually really like this simplified.
I do too. Oh, my gosh, it's so much better.
Just a, just an informational question that I have. Did we really still have fines in this policy?
No. Yeah, it was in the policy. That's why we brought the Jenny. Jenny turned the change around within a few days. He noticed it and, um, knew it was significantly, we got off schedule during the.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Cause it, it's been so long since we approved not charging for fines.
Yes, we were all.
I see that.
It was still in.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Yes.
All right. It's just, it was just a weird question.
Yes.
Hey, I asked.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the Pikes Peak Library District circulation policy as amended.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, oppose, say nay. Policy approved.
Thank you. So the next one up is, uh, legal reference service. This was just on the agenda as a routine update. Um, there's some very tiny, if you do see that, just grammatical changes to what is presented before.
I was going to make this comment about the P P L D.
P P L D. Okay, we'll go through and we'll do that moving forward.
I simply have simplify.
Yep.
Do you have any? Language or English grammar people here? I've, I've always had questions about this because I'm looking at the district procedures. And I see A as a bullet point. Technically, you're not supposed to have a single bullet point. You gotta have a B. So if we're just going to do that, I, I, I know this is being nitpicky, but that's always been a. It's a weird, it really is. Hey, I live with, I live with a woman that has a, a English degree and she's. A stickler about that as well. So I, it's rubbing off. So just remove that.
It's a whole paragraph, just a full paragraph.
Yeah.
Not bullet points.
Correct. For one A, yeah. And that, that was, that's just the procedure. It's just, like I said, it's just a grammatic thing. Okay.
All right, so should that be as amended?
Yeah, cause you made a change.
So I move, we, the Pikes Peak Library Board approved the, uh, legal reference service policy as a.
A second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Okay, it's proved.
Thank you. All right. And the final one is the kitchen policy, which is a brand new policy, which is why it doesn't have any red lines. But we developed this so it would come in line with our maker space policy, since at some point we, we will be or are about to open up some programming in the kitchen as well, so.
Does this mean additional services outside of the cooking classes, or is it just because of the cooking?
No, it'll be additional programming outside of the food industry training program. It would be cooking programs that we would need.
Okay, cool.
But the only question I have, and this is again, I, I read this over and over, that first sentence where it says exists to help people thrive through providing, I just, it, it seems like it should be by providing, I don't know if that, somebody tell me, I've read it over and over and over, it just didn't seem. Should it be by providing instead of group providing?
I struggle with the sense a little bit too, and that wasn't the specific.
Oh, you struggle somewhere else.
No, that, that same sentence, but the, help people thrive, just feels like. Cause we have mission statements that talk about why we exist, and so my thought was why, like, we just, what policy is, when we state what our mission is, we already have permission for it.
Correct.
Why don't we say, uh, exists to provide resources? I was gonna describe basically the whole sentence to say the kitchen, Pike's Peak Library District recognizes that food is a way to build community, goes on into that, so just kinda cut that whole, both that first sentence.
I was thinking the exact same.
I would do some, like a simpler, simpler altogether. And the other thing is we need the P P L D in parentheses, because we referenced P P L D. Well, this was different, actually say P P L D, but we don't specify what the, so, alright.
I have a question. Well, maybe it's not for this policy, and maybe I'm just reading way too deeply into this, but we talk about, you know, the safety procedures and how you could get food poisoning, you know, reaction, cuts, burns, all that, is there any need to say anything about liability?
That's a good question.
I mean, we talked about horrible things that could happen.
They sign a waiver.
I see that there's a waiver to be signed, so I guess we're not covering it.
No, 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 the liability, when they were working on this, all of that was discussed, but they're just going back, and I'm not sure we have it there. So, which, if we edit it here, we.
I was just curious, I just, as I'm reading it, I'm thinking, well, those things are pretty severe.
And, and does the waiver only cover issues from the student or person or patron that's doing it and not necessarily the equipment? So if there's a problem with the equipment, I'm not saying this would ever happen, I don't know if there is. I'm not saying this would ever happen.
We do want.
We really do. But if there's ever a problem with, I don't know, an oven, or there's, and I don't know, something, I want to say blows up, because I'm really going to extreme here, but is that covered under the, the waiver as well? I don't know, like blenders malfunctioning or things like that, equipment malfunctioning, is that stuff covered under the waiver from the library? Because that's, to me, that's kinda hard to cover from the waiver, so I, I am curious now what that waiver actually covers.
A waiver should be part of this policy, it should be a condition.
But you know.
Or a link, a hyperlink to it.
Exactly.
Can we, yeah, was it okay to table this and come back to, because I know there's this information and like, there was.
A discussion.
And I think we just need to.
Well, I, and I have a, I know that there was some amendment made up here, but I, my recollection of the kitchen of when that was brought before the board and you go to yay, 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 whatever, but it was to, to create opportunities for culinary literacy and workforce development, that was the initial reasoning we started, what we did in the kitchen. I know that we're looking at expanding it, so I still feel like it, there exists, or provides resources and opportunities in culinary literacy and workforce development and recognizes or whatever, but I still think that we need to say something about providing those resources.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I would just say, I, I would ask that the admin team preworked that a little bit to do that, but I, I was cut, like really.
Oh, yeah, that other step.
Because, I mean, really, do we exist to help provide opportunities?
No, 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 I don't want that, I just think that it, we need to provide resources.
That's not why we're here, so that's what I'm saying, we just say, the only recognized that food is a way to build community, and therefore we offer these opportunities within the kitchen. And not to be politically correct, but there are some people that may not like that wording. As a, as, as a duplication of other services that may be provided outside of the library.
Okay, you're gonna redo that anyway.
Okay.
I, I would also suggest, so, I, I would also suggest that we add the, a hyperlink to the waiver if it's referenced here.
Okay.
I think that would be a good idea, so that whomever is looking at this policy would be able to also look at the waiver ahead of time. I'm assuming that's already been approved by Debbie, right?
Yes, and there's sort of, again, we did discuss a lot of our liabilities as well with Debbie, but again, I do not, I just don't remember, and there are emails from her, so that's why I'm like, we'll look back.
Okay, so, so I'm, okay, make a motion to postpone the kitchen policy approval until the January twenty twenty three vote. Okay. That's why I jumped in there, that's why I jumped in there, I'm not making this motion, I'm not. Already, already done it, so, okay, presentation sketch, we call it a.
We gotta vote because he's made it up.
Motion, and somebody seconded it.
Anybody seconded it?
Yeah, Debbie did.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed, say nay. Okay, Heather?
Yes, Heather, good evening. Hi. Oh, hi. So, the goal tonight is to learn about and discuss Proposition one eighteen, family, the family and medical leave insurance program, with unfortunately a vote in December, because by an order, if you were going to opt in or opt out, boards have to make that decision before January first, twenty twenty three.
So we were gonna do that.
So unfortunately, that will be one that you won't wanna think about what you wanna do for the December meeting. I am not nearly as articulate as employers council, so I can't outline probably better than the white paper that is in your packet, whoever, I'll, we'll do a quick recap. So importantly, this is also known as Proposition one eighteen, it was voted on by Colorado voters, and what it is, it's paid family leave. Remember that the F M L A covers twelve weeks of unpaid leave under the federal guidance. This is for a serious health condition for somebody or their family, or for when they have a baby, that would help with continuing pay. Importantly, it's not a hundred percent replacement, it's a graduated scale, and there is that, that was included in the white paper. Uh, and so it does a partial wage replacement. What it looks like, and it's, or that twelve weeks is up to twenty five hundred dollars, and as you see this scale, so it's a partial replacement. If you were to, there's three choices, as is in, is in the white paper, we can opt in, opt out, or opt out and allow staff to voluntarily opt in. There is no cost for that, if the staff member opts in themselves, but there is the administrative side, which is that finding it still has to handle payroll deductions and things like that. Most folks, if there's a point four or five percent that was paid for by the employer, if you opt in, and a point four or five percent that's paid for by the employee E. There are employers, however, who have chosen to cover the total cost as a goodwill motion for their staff, so that is also an option, okay, with the total of that point nine percent. Importantly, they start Colorado, so Colorado starts collecting premiums in twenty twenty three, benefits can start getting paid out in twenty twenty four. So there's that. And while you also have the requirement to vote what you're gonna do by January first, if you vote to opt out, and the only reason we have the opportunity to do that is because we are a government entity, right? Not everybody for profits don't have that choice. As a government entity, we do have that. If you choose to opt out, you could do it for up to eight years, and then at that eight year point, the board would have to go again. Importantly, this is very new, so I sent you the link with the website, because there's continues to be things up at the website, so some questions that were asked when I shared with Internal Affairs Committee has continued to get added to the website. But one of the questions that Internal Affairs asked me is, what are other people doing? So I've got that for you. Couldn't ask everybody, and some people they get back to me, but City of Color Springs has already voted to opt out, D twenty has already voted to opt out, El Paso County has not yet voted, but plans to opt out. Douglas County Library, opt out, Hutter River Public Library, opt out, Grand Canyon Library, opt out, Mesa County Public Library, opt out, Lyons, opt out, Pablo City County Library, opted in, and they're funding the entire cost, so they are the anomaly in that.
Do they want to fund our cost too?
Good idea, I would certainly welcome you wishing out of the board. So, yeah. So that just gives you a few benchmarks, of course, you know, not every, that's not every school district in, in town, that's not every library in the state, that gives you a rough smattering. So one of the common reluctance's to opting in right now is the fact that it's a great program. And so there are folks now, if you opt out this year, it could be good for up to eight years or until you vote again. So if in a year or two, you wanted to revisit it, you wouldn't have that option. Uh, the last question that's probably super relevant to you is, what does P P L D already offer? We do offer a six weeks paid parental leave for both mom and, and dad. Either one is eligible, but it's parental, it's not for any serious conditions. We also do have a six week extended paid medical leave for your own serious health condition, not for a family member, but you have to, you have to pay into that, you pay in a certain amount of sick leave and make it to the six weeks, so not everybody opts in, so it's not available to everybody, but they all have the choice to opt in at time of hire or during any future subsequent over or moment they get opted in. The last piece that is a huge differential between what this is and what F M L A is, is the accessibility. F M L A specifically says you can be off twelve weeks unpaid for your own health condition, your kiddo, your spouse, your parent, that's it. Proposition nineteen says anybody you define as, as a family member. So it's very broad. The other difference is that F M L A requires you to work one thousand two hundred and fifty years in fifty hours.
Nobody gets it.
So. Only Tammy qualifies. But, no, so you have to earn one thousand two hundred and fifty hours in the prior year. Unlike that, you have to have only earned twenty five hundred dollars working for the organization to qualify for Proposition nineteen, so you don't have the same longevity with it that you do for F M L A, right? So those are some pros and cons.
I was gonna say, I just double checked, D eleven opted out as well, so.
Tell them to return my comments.
I, I have a, a couple of questions.
Yes, I may or may not know the answer, but we can find it.
Okay. The third option, which is, we would decline.
Yep.
But we would open for the employee to opt in.
Correct.
Is that for eternity, or is that for that eight year period as well?
So it's, it's on calendar years, and it's for as long as you, so you vote, so you would have to vote again, you know, if you said, okay, for the first year, we'll let them opt in, you would have that next year, you could, if you were thinking you're all gonna opt in or opt out different from what you had voted for, you'd have to vote again at the tail end of, you know, this time next year, following year. But you, if you let this employee opt in, it's as long as they're a witness. Yeah, yeah, unless you decide to change the collective.
Okay, and then this is a question for Randy. How do you feel about your staff having to do this payroll deduction, but not for the entire staff, but for specific people if they were.
Well, I mean, obviously, put additional burden on one person, or a barrel, one barrel person.
It's, it would be a lot of work.
Yeah, um, I mean. If, if we said, do what you would, but it would be a price.
Okay.
We need to revisit the last four hours stuff.
No, the other question I had was, it was really to the other board members. Do we want to, I know that the agenda said presentation and discussion, can we bypass that and do a vote? Um, or do you feel comfortable, does the board feel comfortable doing a vote?
I do want to point out, one thing we did talk about at Internal Affairs, which was basically Heather, was.
I will say.
You were there.
We just did all the talking.
We just talked, is, is that I felt that one, one of the things that would be attractive to employees was a broader definition of who they could take leave from. So it didn't have to be an immediate family member, but there, there are lots of situations where, you know, you got someone who takes care of your kids, and then they get sick, so you wanna take care of that, that kind of thing. And, and so we do have the option either now or at some point in the future to expand our, if we stayed with our own plan, to expand the definition of who we would cover, if that's something.
Absolutely, so we can change the policy, so there's pros and cons, right? So the, a pro is that somebody might say, and here's a common one that we can get sometimes, my grandmother raised me, she's like my mother. And I, and F M L A doesn't call it that, right? So there are scenarios where like that, that makes perfect sense, and I think that's what they have in mind here too, right? I have, I have a friend, but she lives with me and I care for her, and she's like a sister, right? These guys are sisters. The flip side, however, is that I could say, me and Tammy, we are so close, we work together all the time, and we are like family, and she's not doing well, and I'd like to take off to take care of her.
Well, good, as long as you're taking care of me.
Yeah. So, so, so there is concern, I will say, in the broad HR community of abuse, even though it's well intended, for the fact that so many families don't meet what was a historical definition, right? And, and the way it's written, I couldn't say, Heather, you don't get it, because Tammy doesn't make Heather's definition, but the person who fights grandma, right, it does, you know, pick and choose, you're all in, you're all out, so that's the basic.
I was gonna say, like Debbie, I like broadening that definition in our own policy, but still not having it wide open.
Well, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I.
Idea out there for you to like.
Yeah, no, I, I do, I really like that one, but, but having it, you know, you can, I know we're not making that policy change tonight, but you could do it generational, right? You know, two generations up or down type of thing, so it's still sort of a, a relative thing or. Anyways, um, but I think it's a, a good consideration for at least January or later. So. So we have to make a decision today?
That is up to y'all, we, I have pitched the things to give everybody time to think about it, that you could make the vote next, but I know you're trying to keep December limited, so if, if the board feels ready to vote tonight, I don't think there's anything that happens.
I'm fine voting tonight, I don't know if anybody else has questions that we need answered, what do you recommend?
I recommend that if you feel like you know your heart and mine, that you go for it, but, but of course, obviously, some people are, you know, process slower than others, have to think about different repercussions on chap, like, you know, whatever other experts they might know. So, I mean, really, it's a lift to you, what's important is though, it has to happen before January first, because as soon as y'all make a vote, I have a state portal that I have to go in and tell them what we've decided to do or not do, otherwise they automatically start charging us premiums off first, which is fine if you're opted in, not so fine if you're opted out, so.
What about the employees, have they ever sensed of what they feel about us?
I don't.
Feedback?
Um, you know, the, one of the things that Pablo's board opted in, felt like was that state that voters voted for it. So their feeling was voters voted for it because they want it. That being said, you know, I know that there are concerns for those who vote in about, we already have a staffing shortage, what does that look like if there's a very loose paid option? And again, not that we wanna, you know, break the backs of our staff, because we, we certainly don't, that's why we have already had our own plan, you know, creative, our parental leave is only a couple of years old, so it's relatively new. But the question being, okay, so if there was, you know, part of what sometimes limits people's absences is that they come back to get the full paycheck, and if there's a partial paycheck, does that mean more absence? And we don't know, because it's a new plan, so we don't know statistically what that's gonna look like, because again, it's not just parental. Because again, it's not just parental, it's serious health conditions. And you, you might get surprised at how many people, well, by having a serious health condition.
Well, and I think on the flip side of that though, it could be an attractive piece of what we offer to, to potential employees. You know, it could be something that somebody would say, well, gee, I can pay into this plan there or whatever. And I could, because you never know when we're going to need that. It's just kind of like the health savings account or whatever they have spending accounts. They have that pretty, you know, lucrative for some people. So that's just a flip side.
I know, and I, I've thought about that. The, the flip, flip side is like, we only have so much money that we can pay each of these. And so for them to pull additional funding out on their own to fund this, I mean, we already have other avenues for being able to help.
Well, I agree.
Those situations. So there, this isn't the only backup that we have. And this is going to be employee funded.
So an additional option that some of the libraries have is they have a short term disability plan. We currently don't have short term disability, we have pretty generous sick leave in addition to the paid sick leave bank and the parental leave options. But there are organizations that I talked to that said, we have a short term disability plan. We looked at that several years ago and fully funded that library, it's cost prohibitive for us. But their plans are by, funded by the staff member. So Tammy opts in, Tammy pays for it. That's it. We do listen to straight important. That was another avenue that some folks looked at for similar practice actions. If we were looking at something like that though, we would be looking at stopping the Randy and I benefits right next, in the next summer. Following year, because we couldn't just like turn it off.
What's good is we already have a plan yet.
That's true.
Employees. And it seems to be working. And doing something that's never been done before, it's brand new. That issue may, we should follow up.
The, the other thing that we talked about in IA was people being out that long, you're not just going to be able to coast on their job. You're gonna have to put somebody in there, which means you're gonna have to hire somebody else to work there. So that's a cost that isn't being incorporated into this.
Yeah, it's something, you know, that's true.
So is everyone prepared to vote? But I would just go make a motion that the Pike's Peak Library District opt out of the F A M L I program.
Okay, move to second now. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Okay, it's approved.
So just to clarify, Heather.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have to bring this up again for eight years, correct?
Correct.
But we could bring it up again any chance.
And it will sort of any time. I think you can bring it up anytime, but you'd have to opt in at like a January 1st slot, right? So the latest to recover, if you thought you were in change of mind, it was time of next year. So that there was enough time for us to do the paperwork to have you serve, have you served. And we said we could sort of that to expand the policy a little bit to cover. If you're talking about the policy, then the question I'd ask is that, you know, you have Tiana, you know, like you're thinking of doing that.
That was 118, right? Yes, that was, okay.
Okay, going to reports, we got.
We just can't get enough of Randy.
I thought we got the budget earlier.
We've been waiting.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
So I, I don't think this is going to take terribly long, not like for a budget.
I was kind of surprised it was only a page.
So these are adjustments to the general public only. As you look down through the sheet, obviously the revenue and approved expenditures about halfway down the page. And then the adjustments on that to get down to a new approved revised budget number. Asking for a adjustment to our investment income. We are, I mean, if you looked at the financial statements, you're see we're, we're doing tremendously, at least that much and we'll probably end up possibly with more. I just wasn't sure what the last month's going to turn out. So I I already talked about the specific ownership taxes, taking that down to 3.5. Our E rate, we haven't had projects go through, so over 400,000 on that. Parking lot collections and copier are both down, so I am pulling some of that money out. The grant and designated funds, these are all things that we have picked up this year. And then the corresponding expense, which that sells out to zero impact on the book balance. Incumbrances, shifting to the expenditures, accumbrances, those are actually reserve balances at the end of last year and in, having spent that down. A number of adjustments to operating. Sorry. The other funds, the self insurance and the capital funds. You probably noticed that the 400,000 was not on the original presentation of this. That's just because I just got better information. And I think, I'm thinking that's what our, our claims are going to exceed what we originally budgeted on. And that's kind of what I was talking about, that's the budget session was it was it was going up. For the, for East Library. The 22,899 is actually pulling something out of the capital fund that was originally there that would not be funded by a grant, but ended up being through workforce. And, and obviously for the workforce grant, we got approved that we paid for it so that that shift just to be a cost to grant. Our vacancy pool position savings. Estimating right now 1.155 million. Again, I'm probably being conservative on that a little bit. So our ending adjustment for our original budget would be 2.33 million. And that's roughly for, there's some ins and outs throughout this, but it roughly comes down to that 400,000 dollar bailout on the self insurance. And because I'm talking about the budget, I, I have to push this against the beginning balance of the budget. And all of you probably remembering that our actual year-end balance for last year was over that balance by about 1.3, 1.4 million. So look at the budget sheet, you're not going to see necessarily the 13 or the 11, eight, and there is an actual going forward. So just kind of explain that you probably we haven't seen the 9.5 million dollar number anywhere in the budget stuff we just looked at. Any questions? And this is, this being presented today with a, with a vote, anticipated vote on last four.
Okay, I just have a question. So the budget that we went through this morning or earlier this afternoon, it's like I've been here all day. The 2383532 was included in the budget as, you know, on page 27. Yeah. It was included in there. Does that, so that 11187693 that we're seeing down at the bottom, it does not incorporate that 2383?
Well, what I, what I was trying to say was, if you go out looking for the 90494.
Yeah, it's not going to be here.
That, that was, it's a, so just to alleviate confusion on that. But the 2383 would be in there because I have to basically show actual activity because that's going to result in me doing something. Our votes are already having done something, so I have to kind of drive that through the, the new budget.
Okay.
To get to, to what the beginning balance is really going to, okay.
Okay, this is just a discussion.
More to follow on seventh of December.
Yeah, so basically if, if we don't have any changes or, or questions on this topic, it would be
Okay, thanks. Reports. Friends of Pike's Peak Library, Rita.
Hey, this was nothing like last month's.
Oh, I know. So I was, you know, all your talk about English corrections and everything. So this is a test to see if anybody's read my report. There is a blatant mistake. So Tammy and Tiara, if you had paid, if you paid attention, they caught it at our friends meeting. It, it was in the, it was in the, you know, when we gave the financials, how much? So if you, you remember what it was? Yes. So I was going to give whoever guessed it a coupon, you know, for like three free books from the friends. Sorry, so.
I'd rather pay for my friend.
So we had on the report, we have spring books as book sale. But this even gets better. So my undergrad was English, but it was English literature. So all that means is I can read, but I can't.
See, and I'm looking at that 62 without the dollars.
Oh, oh, see, look, ah.
It doesn't flow through my eyes.
As I said, so Dora might, might dispute this, but theoretically Beth says that our fall book sale was the highest, so that is net, that that is the highest we have ever had in our sale. And our book sales, despite the fact that donations are down a little bit, about in every branch, everything is just going really well. And so Lance, like this, it just means we have more money to give, give to the library. And that's how we sell it is, we always say this is, you know, for the benefit of the library. The only thing we have planned, we did pass our bylaws, we updated those. We were so impressed with Tiara and when she was telling us what, and you guys with your strategic planning, that after the meeting, I pulled them aside and I said, we have to update, not our strategic plan, but our mission and vision. So we're going to update our mission and vision because we actually have some questions ourselves about like some of the programs and events we want to do. How do they really, the question becomes, how do they really fit with who we say we are? So, you know, one way to do that is don't get rid of the programs, just change a bit in the mission. So the only other, next event that we have is our meet the author, which we're going to have right before Christmas on December the 17th at East Library. And you're going to kill me because I just am blanking on the name, but it's a local author. She's an illustrator for a lot of children's books. And so we think that that'll be such a nice, you know, for patrons and those be open to the public for them to have an opportunity to listen and see some of her illustrations. It'd be a great thing to bring kids to and everything. And it's like anything we have, we sell, you know, that the author sells their books. And typically she has already told us that she will give all of the proceeds. Another plus, more, you know, another plus. So that's all. Thank you. And thank you for letting me skip December's meeting.
I knew you would be happy. We should just make Lance do the December.
I'm not offering coupons, I'm offering graphics. Questions about anything in the report?
Excellent. So couple, couple small grants came in that are not reflected here, that you will see reflected next month. Tiro Price Foundation was a $5,000 grant. It actually is going to support the Peer Navigator Proof of Concept and that pilot program. That's another one of these where we finally cracked the nut. And so it's nice to have a point of contact and program officer that we can now talk with about future grant applications and get a feel for what they may or may not be interested in funding. So that, I mean, $5,000 or cash in check, as you obviously hear me say, but, but it, it's about more than the five grand. There was a $2,700 grant that we received from the Erickson Trust, which is one of the I wish meaning we're here. I think it's five now. Grant programs that the Pike's Peak Community Foundation offers. It actually complements the grant that we received last year at about this time from the Independence Center. So last year we received that $25,000 grant from the Independence Center. Part of that funded the Fusion and Dragon software that is for equipment that helps serve our visually impaired patrons. This provides training for staff on that software. So it's, so, so it's a nice, it's a nice complement to the funding that we received from the Independence. And I would be remiss to not say that there are still concerts, concert tickets available to Miss Peggy's concert on Friday. So if you're looking for something to do, now I turned to Danny Beck and Copper. And if you're looking for something to do, City Auditorium at 6:30.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, financial report, Randy.
You know, I thought mics were so long. You know, it, it's, Randy's aren't real long, it's just there's more of them here.
So we've already heard a lot from Randy today, can you be shorter than this?
He just said, do you have any questions? From his butt.
Yeah. All right, we'll try that one. All right, everybody. So we're looking at October we are still hanging in there at year over year on our revenue of 4.4% growth. So that means we're at 37 million. Year to date, actual budget, we were at 96.4. We still got two months left. So I'm, I'm still waiting for some, actually at this point, some entries of intergovernmentals. So we will probably top our, our 100% of that. Personnel search or I'm sorry.
Excuse me, what is the, you have admitted properties and delinquent. Is that the link one tax?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So under the property tax section, yeah.
Those are those that are still coming in.
Yeah, those are categories that we get from the county when they send us over our tax report. So it's, yeah, basically them collecting delinquent taxes. And she was talking about a treasurer fee earlier. And so that's just for information. That's actually a fee that we get charged by the county treasurer's office. It's 1.5% of all of our property tax remitted to us minus the specific ownership tax. So, and that's statutory. I just actually checked with their office to see if that was going up this next year. Open statutory will let you know.
Get any more?
It just like talked to.
You have another meeting or anything else to share with us or that it?
No, that was.
So I, I had one question, if you could clarify. So I'm on page 102 of the packet. I'm not sure what. At the bottom you've got, so it's the total expenditures here. Number two and three.
Number two and three both start off as, as of year-to-date, October twenty-two, year-over-year, twenty-two versus twenty-one. Is that accurate? Because all the numbers are different, I didn't understand, maybe I didn't read it correctly, but.
Well, what I'm trying to, as of, as of this report, the year-to-date on, on those two, what I'm trying to do is, since our, if you look at the
to go say spending increased by this amount, they're different numbers.
Yeah, but they're for two different categories. So the, the, like for number two, where that it corresponds to contractual services. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. No, that's fine. So the long and short of what I was trying to explain there is that, you know, like every, every month, there seems to be more things in the contractual services that are going over their budget, even though the total for that category is still below the eighty-three point three or whatever the, the month piece of it is. And all I'm trying to do is just try to true up the total, well, in fact, if we flip that to the next page, the budget number there's for the whole year. And so if I'm comparing one year to the other, I'm just trying to true it up.
I missed the notes on the side, so I was, I, I just saw like the exact same verbiage and different numbers, I went, in a second, that doesn't make sense.
It's a lot of numbers today.
So just skipping through all that detail for the expenditures overall, where it's seventy-six point nine. Basically, I haven't spent ten months worth of, of expenses.
That's good, keep that up.
That's good. Our special revenue fund, that's that one that just kind of hangs on forever. I see in the sixty-five thousand dollars is still up in that. The capital funds, I actually saw very little activity or changes those. The one that did have some changes, because we got the, the insurance proceeds posted, is for the roof of East. It currently minus fifty-eight dollars in that fund, and that's why I'm asking for the balance of the roof damage to be supplemented in a budget. But the other ones are just basically no activity for October report. And our cash balance total is at twenty-three point three. Questions?
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
As always. Okay, Tammy.
Okay. Any questions? Be shorter than. Sorry. So any questions really embarrassed to it, before I point out a few things. I kind of wanted to point out one, just two things. Um, first, did you see on page one twenty-six, some of these new wooden toys that they're adding to Family Place? Some of those are actually built by a company right here in Colorado Springs. So the library did some research about some things, so we've been able to support a local business as well with that. So I wanted to point that out, and then the other thing I wanted to point out that I thought was a cool initiative is Young Adults has a work study that has come from the Colorado School for the Duff and the Blind.
Yes.
And so, um, they're really excited to have the student. And they have started and have provided some additional input, but I think this is an exciting new partnership that we have with the school and, and we're starting to do some programming there, so I just wanted to put that up as well.
And you have an intern that was, their time was up, but they decided to stay, right?
Yes, yes, so that intern is staying through the end of the year.
All right, thanks. Okay, let's go to service, support services reports and communications facilities and resources, page one seven thirty-seven. Questions or comments?
The only thing I have is, is I appreciate getting the bookmark emails.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. I thought that was a good idea, remember, came up with that, to send those to us. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
I believe Eric.
Good job, Eric. Thank you. Yeah, I enjoyed having us to talk to you guys. Yeah, that's been great.
Okay.
Well, we've seen a report for security a little bit, how are they doing? They doing okay, or?
Yes, they're doing okay, and Michael will actually write over.
Yeah, because I knew that they had a lot going on.
If, if Mike's got to do it, then everybody's gonna have.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot, yes, they're doing, they're doing well.
Okay, good.
Their training is going well with the security office service as well, with the community supervisor. So yes, he's been trying to hire a lot of people, there wasn't like much turnover, and every time there is like, they, they, you know, someone, he hires someone.
Yeah, I know.
Also, he, he hired, he was in the process of hiring a supervisor, so.
So he's busy?
Yes.
I knew I had talked to him, he said, it's just so busy, yes.
Yes.
Can I ask a question to Heather? So the vacancies that we have.
Yes.
It seems to be consistent for the past year.
Yeah.
If not longer, it's around the forty-five, forty. Have we thought about possibly hiring temp workers to fill some of those?
Yes. So.
I, I know, I know.
Interestingly, with temps, right, they can, for some way, be more expensive because of the trading and the short time that you get there. Even if you're not willing to get it, we typically see like, it's pretty constant, right, to get, quite frequently hired to people. It's tricky, we could see in those stats, right? Pretty, it's pretty consistent. It's not inconsistent, though, with the community, say, the country, right, that we're, they're just seeing higher turnover than we did before. Part of, you know, we post quite a few positions, but there are also managers who have not filled positions for various reasons as they ponder if those positions should be replaced as they were. Or rather, they should be rolled into different branches, different departments, or different roles. So part of the budgeting process is also an opportunity where they say, well, hey, I have three library assistants, I really think I need one associate or two, or whatever, and to try to balance their staff depending on what their needs are. So some of that always happens about this time where they pitch through Tammy, like, well, how, how can I move these things around a little bit? So when they're looking budgetarily about not having new positions, sometimes they are able to look at those vacancies and re-purpose them in ways that are helpful. We've looked at creative ways to continue to post jobs and try to attract folks, but we are seeing what the rest of the culture is seeing, which is choosing.
Employed resistance?
You know, just alternative, so, so of course, our, you know, our hope is always to encourage folks to stay, to be able to stay. And we hope to do that through benefits, through, you know, realistic but fair ranges, things like that. But that being said, you know, that's been a challenge, and whenever I go to the HR roundtable, it's the Colorado Library's HR roundtable, or the one that is the Colorado Springs HR roundtable, we're all kind of wrestling with very similar things. So I, I, you know, I guess misery loves company, we're not unique in that way, but at the same time, you know, there's a whole bunch of us folks in HR trying to figure out how you crack that nut, and it's been really difficult to figure out how to do that long term. So temps, we, there has been some, we actually have more temps now than we have in several years. We have like four high temps now, and we used to only maybe get one at a time. So there has been a little bit of expansion of that. The challenge with that is always the amount of time it takes somebody to train a temp, and then, and then they're gone, right?
Yeah.
So there's that investment that you don't, you don't really get back, so.
Yeah, no, no, it does, it does.
But stay up there, I think kudos to you and your higher program.
Tell me and Cody are really hard. We had realized that we had not taken advantage of tracking our veterans in our system, so they had to go kind of dive into every single four hundred and three personnel files, right, to, to find out what all the stats were to put in a good package, but we were really proud of that. And ours, importantly, there was a couple ways you could get that work, one was for having a high proportion of veterans, the other was having a high retention rate for veterans, and that's the one that we found by the work, so.
Congratulations either way. Great job.
Okay, Tiana.
Okay, so how long they were mixed up, just wanted to know. So actually, mostly, we've been working on the budget, so, and I feel like today, Randy jokes, like, it turns out that his wife is not doing well, and he said, don't worry, Tiana, I have not been like exposed to her, because I have not even seen her recently, so I'm like, okay. So that was, that was his response, when I was like, are you okay? So I did actually have some afternoon meetings, I had a meeting with our new district eleven superintendent, and there were some ideas how we can partner better as two organizations, and enhance the elementary schools reading levels and how to help them during the summer adventure program as well. So that was, that was very, I believe, a great productive meeting. And then I also had a meeting with Commissioner Holly Belits. So, and she actually came here and we talked about the library and what's, what's going on in the library. And also, I did have a meeting with publicly Commissioner Bremer as well. So now I'm looking at Laura because I'm like, I forget something. So, yes, and then we also ready to take me and I and Dora, we tend to say, we're reaching. So it was, it was quite interesting, yes, it was, you know, to see what's happening in the region. And, yes, that's, that's what's going on, and I know that you would like me to keep talking, because, you know, just you don't want to go home, but do you have any questions? And of course, strategic planning, we're working on launching that with staff on the second of December. And so, because I now will be presenting that to our staff, and tomorrow morning, Jeremiah and I, eight AM, will be meeting with staff, as we call it, the Thursday, so.
That's actually on a full Thursday.
I know, it's empirical, that's what he always texts me, are you going to be there? Well, are we going to be there? So, yes, that's.
Thanks, I appreciate it. The board reports, governance committee report.
Well, we did meet, we have sent the bylaws to the attorney, and hopefully she can review them, and hopefully we'll get them approved by the end of the year. We also did take a vote from the board on the land acknowledgement. We did get a yes over the no, but we do want to make sure that we move forward, but we don't want to put an extra financial burden on the, on the ER. So we need to have conversation around that and see.
Because my vote was with yes with contingency.
Uh, they're not wanting to make sure. I'm thinking, I don't know if that's part of their budget anyway, to work on some of these things or not.
I was just gonna say, my vote would change after today.
And it depends how the board would like to proceed with that, because as it was presented before, it's not just like to do something, have, okay, it's quite, you know, just confirmation, but also what are we going to do with that? And that will be the financial impact on that.
And we, we kind of talked about that, and I don't think that impact will come until we get the land acknowledgement. Because he won't be putting it on any signage until we actually come up, she brings us a draft, and we can talk about it and then vote on it. So that may be, because we did say that we wanted that land acknowledgement to, to be done well, and it could take up, up to a year before it even came to fruition.
So, let me ask, since Hearst was contingent on cost, is it fair to just get, have a rough assessment of what cost would be and then?
Yeah, and that was.
We can decide at that point.
Well, that's true, we can do that, but I think that that's what we had talked about. Um, we also reviewed the CEO goals, and I think Tiana has, is right on track. And Dr. Stoll already talked about the board vacancy. So we're, no, that's not the board, the board vacancy, they are meeting next week, tomorrow. Dr. Stoll will be at that meeting, right? So hopefully we'll know who our new board members will be.
Well, at least we have an idea.
Yeah. So, and then, as I said, Dr. Stoll did talk about the specialty, so that's the word. Well, we're hoping Scott stays on, because he wanted to ask all the questions that we don't ask sometimes.
Hey, Colonel Ferris Committee.
We met, and most of the things that you voted on tonight, we talked about, so I won't go over them again. The other thing, just, just in case you're wondering, is we did set some parameters for URA presentations, so that we we emphasize to Jeriah, I hope, that we are all on a library board, and so we read things, and so they don't have to spend a lot of time telling us all the things that they give us on paper, so in reverse, that works.
So then, I just hope that they're always updated, because sometimes the presentation and our written word that we receive are too diff, we're trying to find that, well, what did that? Yeah.
If they're gonna talk about something, we haven't seen it.
That makes it difficult, yes.
We told them, basically, or at least, this is more, totally what we said, that we, we want the meat of the proposal, we want to know what, what they're gonna spend the money on, why they need our help, and what are the pros and cons for the library. And they don't need to tell us who the wonderful person, the developer is, and, you know, all of that stuff. They, they're welcome to submit it, we can read it, but we don't really, just go down our system, so. All of that, so anyway, that's where we are. I'm, I'm really trying, every time they present, I'm like, really, people want to know these things, yeah.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
We have a meeting location for tomorrow.
No, it's here.
Same place?
Yes, it will be a training room, so actually, yes, in this step area.
Okay.
But I will be meeting with, like.
And the, and the time again?
Maybe it's at four, right? Four thirty?
Four twenty.
Oh, yeah, is that when?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't have public affairs committee, I, yeah, all right. Hey, any trustee updates, anything you want to share?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that I got to go to the naturalization ceremony they had last month.
Isn't that a pleasure?
That was awesome, cool. Note to anyone who wants to go, let them know ahead of time, because if you just show up there at the last minute, they'll say, hey, you want to say something, and you have no time to prepare, so you also can't say no. But, but you don't say no to that, it's, it's, it was, we have room in there, and no one else is here, so. But it was, it was phenomenal, so there were twenty countries that were represented, and it was just, it was a fantastic time. Really enjoyed it, so if you haven't gone, go, it was great.
In five active service rooms.
Yeah.
I read that.
Yeah, most people don't think about that, but there are people that do voluntarily go to military in our US interest.
I do have something, so I attended the food service graduation, and I would not recommend that to anybody. Keep it to myself, because it was, the food was just, it was, it was great. I mean, I don't even know how to explain how good it was, but just what those students do on a regular base, you know, they had to, they had to go to these classes all day, pretty much. And so I was impressed with the food that they did. And I know that I'm anxious that's here.
Yeah.
Okay, so he did a great job, he and his staff, for all of that, so I had a great time doing that. And I wanted to say thank you to Tammy and Dora. And I always want to call her Meredith, but it's not Meredith, it's Gail, right? Gail and Meredith, Works for Joy.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I had a little classical conversations, get together, and we invited Tammy and Tiana and Dora and Joy, who's over the homeschooling group, or not the group, the resource center over at East. And I really appreciate you guys. The resource center over at East, and I really appreciate you guys coming, the students really enjoyed it, I hope you guys enjoyed it. And I hope you enjoyed the pre-Thanksgiving Thanksgiving. So I just wanted to say thank you once again for that. Oh.
Anybody else? Okay. The, this last, last Friday was Veterans Day, and I made a presentation to about six hundred people talking about Veterans Day. I used, I used my veteran's family flag, the base from our Saskatchewan, five blue stars, and the first one stands for my great grandfather. Who came with his family from Switzerland. To New Orleans, it took three months, by both, think about that, three months. I went from Europe to New York City in five days, on a Q E two, of course, that's a different kind of boat. Anyway, so John Stoll was my great grandfather, fought the Civil War, the second US infantry. The last star on the list was my youngest son, John Stoll. So I think he's pretty cool about that, so my father was in Army Air Corps in World War Two, an bombardier navigator, would be seventeens, my, myself, third star. Next star was my oldest son, who's a doctor down in Tampa, sent, sent, sent calm, and his wife were there, so anyway, it was a great presentation, it was fun to do, and I enjoyed the possibility, so. Everything I like to say, and I've said this before, is there's a lot going on in the library. Besides what Randy's doing, and Tiana, it's a busy place, and there's a lot happening, so. Our involvement is, is just soak it all up and take it in, but also provide opportunities to ask questions of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, and see if we can't make it better, and knowing what's happening. But the operators are in charge of making it all take place, and we are so fortunate to have people that, on staff, that make this possible, and people continue to come here looking for things, resources, and. There's so much going on, and it's like I like to tell people, this is not your mother's library, the things we do here, never, nobody ever thought about, we'd be doing that, you know, cooking classes, the three D printers, and, and I mean, all this kind of stuff, there's a lot going on. Now, the last thing I like to say is, we have something that is important to us to be looking at, and it's taking a look at who we want to have for the replacement CEO. So that process should be described in more detail at our next meeting, an opportunity to discuss what those things are, if you think they're, they're right, that we'll both vote accordingly, and that we'll chance to vote on all those things. And put them into place and say, okay, that's what we're going to do, and here's how we're going to do it, and everybody's agreed with that, so I think Debbie and Dora are leading that effort. I cleared this with a lawyer, our lawyer, about having two people, and there's nothing wrong with that, you see, that's, that's a common, we're going to do things, to get past the, the normal kind of administrative stuff you got to do. Then later on, you've got to get before the board, and provide a list of the folks that you're going to recommend, and they have to personally. Question each one of them, and make a final decision, who they want to select. So that's what we're going to talk about at our next meeting, and that shouldn't take that long, but we, we've got until January to actually put in place the actual official effort, even though we're doing some questioning tomorrow.
Tammy, for the board take?
No, we're doing questions tomorrow, those people who want to be on the board, yeah, it's a different kind of thing, okay?
So the, I just got a quick question, so the interviewing process, is it one on one, or the whole board together?
We're going to be a board together.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. When it comes to that point, the board decides who we're going to interview. What we want to have on the list, and that we made public, ultimately, and they finally come together, and we'll decide on who should be the next CEO. Now, take question. Okay, it's.
Let me make one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I know Doctor Stoll says that there's a lot going on in the library, and we're so fortunate to be the eyes and ears for the library. But it's also our responsibility, at least, this is my opinion, as I sit on this board, it is also my responsibility to tell others about the wonderful things that go on in the library. I mean, yesterday, one, one of the teachers where I sat among those students, said she was surprised because the library searched for some obscure. I guess middle, they're talking about medieval, I guess, history or something, and they were able to pinpoint and find research on this one person. And I, and then I pulled out my little notebook that I made in Makerspace, that little wooden, they do that? And I said, it would be a great idea to bring kids for a field trip, so they could see what's happening in our library. So I think it's incumbent on our part to spread the word about the wonders that go on in here, I mean, if I would be a little kid, and even looking at that dish made with aluminum pies, plates, I would go, wow, you know? Because that's, it, it was, it's wonderful what we have here, and we need to tell everyone.
Good point, well said. I mean, we all have a chance to meet other public folks doing different things, and we should be sharing the success of libraries, what it provides, an opportunity, you know, I try to do it everywhere I go. Okay, it's almost twenty after seven, meeting adjourned.